We don't have any special presentations tonight, so we'll move on to the superintendent's comments.
Okay. So, Sam Harris, are you going to talk a little bit about the LRFP level study? Okay. So, on the agenda today, you have a resolution to continue to, to hire our architects to do a study of St. Mary's Prep to see the feasibility of us possibly using some space over there. This is something that we've been talking about a little bit. We've already done a walkthrough with the EI, with the EI associates and also by ourselves. The team that we have in place for this is, in on the inside is myself, Sam Harris, Sandy Collins, and Grace Johnson. The reason why we have that team is, obviously, we have the instructional side taking care of it, the operations side taking care of it, and then also because of the way we think it's going to go, we're not sure of all the other things, but it may go by there. But we moved our preschool in there. Our preschool is run by Grace Johnson. So, that's why we got that team in place and our architects. Our attorney also is involved because there's legal things that are involved in that. And Sam Harris has been building a lot of work with Kelly and the state on what exactly are we allowed to do, how can we fund this, what are our options? So, if this thing works out for us, obviously, there's a lot of the moving parts, a lot of things we have to talk about. And the first step on figuring out whether it will work out for us is if they come back and say, you know, it'll cost you too many dollars. Obviously, that's a conversation to have. So, that's where we're at with that. And that's the only comment I have to make.
Thank you, Mr. Porte. Dr. Collins, any additions to the superintendent's comments?
Just end of the wrap ups. The fifth graders, I just want to remind the parents that they will be getting their level placements via Genesis. So, they need to make sure that you have your student's passport to get on to your Genesis account because that's what will be placed once the NJAC and the test scores come back. The other item is just I want to congratulate the future ready teams who we need tomorrow as a district team. They provided all the information for their applications, which includes 135 write-ups and 450 pieces of data and evidence, all hyperlinked. So, it's a huge process and it's pretty exciting to go through. So, we'll be submitting the application this week and then we'll get back in September. Please take this to the superintendent's board.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Sam Harris, any additions to your show comments?
Yes, on the agenda, you will see a resolution to approve the long-range facility plans. This is to comply with the five-year approval. However, the software has not been open since 2008 and all of a sudden it's a crisis that we need to approve it in order for us to get approval for those projects that we need to overcome in the future, specifically in the barbecue field. I have been working with the DOE facility departments. I mean, should get us approved and they have been really helpful. And hopefully, when we, after the recovery tonight, I'll send an extract and hopefully within the next two weeks, we should be getting them flattered.
So, one more thing, sorry. Ross Saber will be here at the next meeting to present the, our updated demographics report. The one I shared with you, like, the road is drafted cover again. We're going back and forth on a couple of numbers. One of the things that's, that's difficult for this is that according to the method that he uses to figure out the incumbent kindergarten, which is live births, the number was off by about 40 kids due to, due to the fact that we actually already know approximately how many kids are registered. So, he did go back and make those changes, but remember, there's a, there's a, there's a formula for this. So, he's going to go back to the other way for the year after. So, you're going to see that as like 190 and back to 150. The reason is he has to have something to base on. He can't just come up with numbers from anywhere. So, he uses two things. One is live births. The second thing, obviously, is we know how much it is. And the other thing that he could use would be an average over the last five years. So, he's going to use the live births and the average over the last five years for next year and year after. And, and look, there's no way for him to capture, you know, eternal of a house. It's just not, it's not part of the formula. When, like, our neighborhoods turn over again, right? You see, you know, and, you know, uh...
To me, that's the problem, right? Because you probably saw the, I guess, more drastic drop-off than you would have if we hadn't had the recession in 2008. And a lot of people were on the drive, so I'm excited to announce that they waited until the values came back up and psychologically now they're, they're up, they're trying to pass it all. So, we saw probably an artificial decline because we didn't have younger kids after the district. So, now we're seeing that, huh? There's got to be a way to figure, you know, there's got to be a way to go ahead, otherwise these numbers are always going to go off. And then that brings in trouble.
Maybe there's a way to go back to the house or solve the issue of that.
Yeah, I'd like to have a conversation about that, for sure. Hopefully, they'll be here next week.
They'll be here next week presenting. We can throw that out to him. Maybe he can research some other method to, to capture it.
Yeah, just have a conversation. See, you know, we can't, you know, we can't go downtown to Jersey.
Well, you know, you know what the weird thing is? It's really only this side of town, too. The other side of town, the numbers for kindergarten are actually even a little lower than the normal for next year. This side's a lot higher.
Now, when you talk about, I think that the census, you know, should apply some information on, you know, the real number of the use of each house in that room.
Probably still the last census was 2010.
Yeah.
So, you're not going to catch any of that.
Yeah, by the time they give you the census data, it's three years after they do the census, something like that, you know.
Yeah, we, we could certainly talk to him because it's interesting to hear him say now the issues in live births because I remember very particularly that White Paul, White Spill, the demographic that was used prior. I remember the presentation, if you remember, you, he said he used live births. He gave the exact, and Ross told us when he presented that he doesn't use live births. So, I'm interested to see, I wish I could go back to that presentation. And his live birth, he showed the live births and live births don't even add up to this. I'm looking at his demography report from previously. He's got, you know, 157. He's got kindergarteners, 148. I don't know where he's, and then he has a huge jump up in first grade. Well, that's the same year, but you're holding out on still. Anyway, we could certainly talk to him when he comes in and figure out what, what formula he's using and what would work best for, if we could call it a better idea than that, so.
And the, the other event that's going to happen in town is code. And granted, you're not going to know exactly how many kindergarteners you can get. But there has to be some form of way.
He has it. He has it. That's, that's actually, I don't, I don't, I'm going to say it's easy for him to do. I don't know if it's accurate, but it's easy because there's a formula they use, whether or not, you know, you know what's hard is that, you know, they'll tell you there's going to be X number of kids moving in, but when do they come in? What are, what are the apartments actually come online to? Like, does the developer build 150 units and they're all for sale and sold that first day? And then everybody moves in with three kids? No. You know, the thing, by the time, by the time those numbers happen, how many years is that? The time that they're built, sold, and then populated with kids, like, yeah, I, it's hard for them to tell you whether or not. He just uses the formula based off the Rutgers study. Supposedly, it was updated in 2018. That tells you a number that you can come up with perfectly depending on whether or not it's code or whether or not it's regular, a rental. There's other, there's some other factors you can ask.
If that's being included, then that's...
Well, if, if it isn't, right? Because from the LRFP perspective, we cannot include those units that are not built yet. But we have a separate study that will show us those units. So, you kind of have to take, hit correct or wrongs to you. You have to take his study that says, here's what we can, we can submit to the LRFP. And then we have to say, these are, this, he actually has broken down by development based upon what was presented as how many bedroom rooms and all that. And then you have to combine them together, if I remember correctly. Because I don't think the numbers from the LRFP can include code.
There's a...
It can't include anything that's not built.
That's true.
It has to be physically built. It don't need to be with time.
They have, they have probably a approximately 1% increase for the future years.
Which is just probably organic. It's not, yeah, yeah. That's not based upon section units. So, but we do have the numbers, James. So, look at each individual development that has been proposed and at least qualitatively moving along within the town. So, there's one in particular that's by far the biggest impact.
What's going to be your thoughts? And just take a second. In your, in your, in my report of, does he write over the town or the county, which month of what, which report it was that had the demographic draft in it?
It was in the drive.
Right, it was in the drive. It was either...
It wasn't the committee's?
It's not there.
Oh, it was in the committee, too. Was it in the committee? It was in the committee. That's why you need to... Oh, the last committee, IMP, I mean, House Agenda, which is June, that folder. And then, James, your question is, it shows you how we figured out those numbers.
Did he go back and redo the numbers for the proposed units? When you say culling units, but the, the...
He did. It's on the fourth page, if you find it.
Okay. Because I'm looking at his letter from 2016 and he says in there, these are not Rutgers study yields. In that those yields are out of date and should not be used or accepted. So, if they updated them in 2018, I'd be interested in comparing what he had in 2016 to what he's giving us now.
So, he has a pretty good breakdown on page three. James, you see it there? Page three, student yields.
Okay.
And then he breaks it down by market rate, student yields, and affordable. There's a different formula for each. And he says that we should, we could expect 77 total children in the district, in the town, K-12, and 69 for us and eight for them. And then he, he expects by the time these are done, an increase of 91 kids, district-wide, because organically, you said, an increase plus these 69 other kids. So, that's, that's how, this is what he does. The, the latest thing about Ram Associates, which is the one next to Dolls, is 116 units. And the breakdown is on like what kind of units they're going to be. And then the latest one, the one that's closest to starting is Landmont Con. It's the one that's by Z Field. That's, those are rentals though. So, James, they have a different, they have a different formula for rental than they do for a condo that's being purchased.
That's good to know.
So, there's, he's got, they have, there is some science behind it, but it's not as scientific as we like, obviously.
Your system's perfect, I agree with that, yeah.
Again, this one's a draft. It'll be in the final four when we have the meeting next, in two weeks. Okay?
And the other thing to keep in mind, too, guys, is that this doesn't include any single-family homes being built, which I can tell you there's at least six in my neighborhood. They're currently under construction, brand new, so. And nobody built a four-bedroom house in a neighborhood of Denville that's not bringing kids into the district. Nobody, no retired family is like, hey, let's go get a four-bedroom, 4,000 square foot house.
Those are ones in Nicole?
Those are one. There's also, it's called this act by me that was blown out that has three more coming in. And that one by Nicole is six, at least. And then there's a couple more right on Smith that are being built right now, never ending, so.
Yeah, you're right. There's at least 10. So, I mean, and I know that's not significant, but every little bit, when you start adding a few here, a few there, it's...
Yeah, you had, like, you had trees that were built out, like, the monsters kind of sat there.
Some of them were. One of them off of Smith, which is, Smith and Nicole were in parallel to each other. There's a street that was, brand-new street built in off of Smith that's probably been, but six houses on it. The second house, I think, is done, but the third house is being built right now. So, that's one. There's another one. There's multiple houses. I'll tell you, even the house on Franklin that is sat dormant, I guess it's open, it's Franklin. It's before the Y. That, that house, they were working on the driveway. They haven't worked on the house in three years. So, it seems like, I think the market's coming back around, like you said, you know? So, these houses that sat dormant, and now suddenly the builders have interest in finishing them and selling them. That's at least my take on it, but... All right. Sorry for the sidebar.
You good, Sam Harris?
I'm good.
Thank you. All right. It is 7:47. We'll open up for our first open public comment section, comment section. For agenda items, we will open up. To anyone who has any comments, please come up and state your name and address for the record, sign to the sheet. Be glad to hear any comments. Seeing no one approach, I will close our first open public comment section at 7:48 PM. I will move on to the agenda. Mr. Cass, would you mind moving us through all business? No action to take in?
Sure. At the, at the next meeting, I'm going to request that pursuant to NJAC 620-2.13C, we certify that it's June 2019 and review the Secretary's company financial report, appropriations section, and pronostication with appropriate business officials. To the best of our knowledge, no major capital fund has been overextended in violation of the year's regulations and that sufficient funds are available to be used for financial applications for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Any questions, comments on the reports, minutes? Seeing now Mr. Luer, would you move on to new, new business action to be taken tonight?
Certainly. I would like to move items one through point five's block, calling attention to items which are noted as Q and R in the, in the addendum, but should actually be A and L.
There's one that's also a six, too.
Oh, and a six. Thank you for pointing that out. We are looking at a whole, a bunch of different things that we're approving. We should, we'll be going on tonight. Summer workers, new hires for next school year. We are rescinding a, a, rescinding something from the 513 meeting, personnel number three, and re, rescinding that, removing that as a special ed teacher. A resignation, more summer exploration programs to be paid for by registration fees, extended school year, teachers, aides, aides. A second rescinding from the 513 meeting and approval that is full-time equivalent. And another new hire. That's all on item one. Item two is, we will be approving, sorry, here, we have a resignation for a driver. This one is backdated, but we're approving the set quarter of the chaperone for the middle school trip. Excuse me. We will also, we are also approving the set quarter of the age monthly non-actual stipend, retroactive from May 20th, for serving as acting principal through the 2019, 2020 school year or until he is no longer in the acting principal category. We're approving a job description for the middle school principal and, I'm sorry, middle school vice principal, thank you. And that the board approved the extension of the 2018-19 Class 3 agreement with the township of Denville to include coverage for the extended school year and summer tuition in 2019.
Second. Thank you, Kim. Questions, comments?
Can we make a question on the resuming?
Okay, so, the first one is because the person is going from an aide to a teacher. She's already been approved as an aide, but she's going to be switching over to be a teacher. The second one is the person's already been approved as a full-time aide, but it's now going to be a part-time aide.
I did want to welcome a few employees we have, custodian, several teachers, all coming into the district. Thank Mr. Corman for jumping into the chaperone on the Valley View Middle School leave trip. Heard great things about the trip. Any other questions, comments?
Sorry, we also have the parents. I just apologize on the, that was a really efficient day, like, four blocks. But the one thing about the trip, I'd like to just say is that it's, it's great that, that our people want to do this because they don't have to do it. And they take our kids down there and they get an experience that's really terrific for the kids. And I just want to say, hopefully, we're going to thank them. I did thank them on our social media and email, too. It's really terrific that they're willing to give up that amount of time. It's a tough trip. Talking about, lost some of these at 6:00 AM, they just come back till about 8:15, 8:30 on a Friday. And they go from about 6:00 AM on the bus, it's all around 10:00 PM the first day, up again at 5:00 AM the next day, all the way through. They're, they're driving up to Hirscher Park at night, spending the entire day there until about 5:00, get back on the bus, coming home. So, it's a lot of work and my name's not on there for a reason, but it's very nice that they feel to do that. I did do 10 years, but just sorry that it goes. But I do appreciate everybody's time over there.
I would also like to thank Mr. Corman for stepping up and being the person we need in the position he's in right now.
Yeah, I heard great, great things about the trip, about the way the students acted, the educational experience from it, just the stories I heard from students directly as well as parents has been all very positive and appreciative of all the chaperones, whether they were staff members or community parents. We appreciate it very much.
Oh, yes. Thank you. This is, I just pointed out, there is... Oh, that's, that's me.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Anybody else have anything for personnel action to be taken tonight? See, nothing wrong about these.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Whiteman?
Yes.
Ms. School?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. All right, Ms. Whiteman, would you mind taking us through operations action to be taken tonight?
Sure. I would like to move this long list of operations, resolutions, under number one, 81 through 11. The board, I'd like to move that the board approved to amend the long-range facilities plan that we've been discussing to comply with five or 40 requirements for the Educational Facilities Construction Financing Act. Also, the board approved the attached proposal from Pro Academy Furniture, hundred and contract number as noted, to replace and repair the locker room at Valley Middle School in the amount of $37,516.81 funded with maintenance reserves for the 1819 unspent funds. The board approved the attached proposal from CNN Door Controls, replace two doors in the amount of $20,400 funded with maintenance reserve funds from the 1819 yearly unspent funds. The board appointed French and Corolla Associates to provide electrical engineering services for an electrical feasibility report for Lakeview and Riverview in the amount of $3,500 each school for $7,000 total. That the board approved the attached proposal from Roxbury Farms to replace damaged carpet at Riverview and Lakeview in the amount of $7,900 from the maintenance reserve funds for 1819 unspent funds. That the board approved the attached proposal from Roxbury Farms to replace damaged carpet at Valley Main Office in the amount of $4,494 funded with maintenance reserve funds for 1819 unspent funds. That the board approved attached proposal from Pro Academy Furniture to replace damaged countertop desk and mail sorter at Valley Main Office in the amount of $9,893.96 funded with maintenance reserve fund for 1819 unspent funds. That the board approved attached proposals from Straight Edge Stripping LLC to repair and improve parking lot at Valley View Lakeview Schools in the amount of $32,280 funded with maintenance reserve funds for 1819 unspent funds. That the board approved attached proposal from R. Gilbridge and Sons Contractors LLC for Mason Rebuilding, repointing District 5 and 3rd, how do you say that?
Ballards.
Ballards at Lakeview School in the amount of $27,000 funded with maintenance reserve funds for 1819 unspent funds. That the board approved the EI feasibility study of St. Mary's Prep for additional classroom space for a cost of $4,800. And finally, that the board approved the attached proposal for Pro Academy Furniture, hundred and contract as noted, to replace old unsafe cafeteria tables at Lakeview Elementary School in the amount of $54,762.40 funded with 1819 budget for each.
Second. Anyone have any questions?
So, on the Street Edge Stripping, we're working on Valley View and Lakeview. That's all, there's no actual paving, right? What's going on? The best is always the steel coating and...
Repairs.
You do the line repairs and the lines?
Repair ceiling and redo the lines. At Valley View, it's going to be to, to reorganize, sort of pick up some spots. But just to give everybody the idea of where it is, it's, it's the entire upper lot of Lakeview, all the way out to Birch Run. And then that route that goes down to the playground, and then the playground. And then Valley View, from the point you enter the driveway, all the way into the parking lot and then out. And all the rest is, is also, I don't know if you pulled it to Valley View Lake, it's bumpy in the bottom. That proposal's also to repair that bottom piece at Valley View. So, there's a bunch of stuff getting done.
Didn't we just have the Lakeview lot paved?
The lower lot. We didn't do the upper lot.
But we, I thought we scaled that and repainted it.
Well, that was silly or not, if I'm second here here, and they, they haven't redid it yet for very minimal costs, too, because you build so much other stuff and it'll be, you know, all the strip, it needs to be re-stripped anyway. So...
They're not going to screw up the strip like they did on the lower lots.
It's going to be covered yet, man.
Do you mean looking at that, that was maybe looking to try to pick up in the parking of that, that side piece you were talking about?
So, it's about $3,000 a spot.
Really, just to, yeah, three spots.
Yeah, so we're like, let's see, the guy guarantees they're going to give us 12 more spots.
Everybody's got their motorcycles.
Yeah, said they're going to be, they're going to be legal spots, like the ones in this parking lot. I actually have 20.
That's boat pit spots.
Right.
You can park in one of lots in downtown. We're going to have boat pits that you can rent just for your school.
Fall out, fall out, put a car in there. You get ready.
They're going to pull them catapult. You get out and you park your car, you get out and go to the school, catapult flings it into the, into the pond.
Didn't we have a resolution a few meetings ago about repainting the lines of Valley View and gaining a number of spaces?
We got the resolution. We talked about it.
I think I, this is the resolution.
This is actually, we were at the...
Thank you. I appreciate that. What's the problem with the electrical survey we grabbed? I mean, I had a little, I'm a little flustered by that.
So, it's, we have a, we have an electrical service that we've never seen before because it's not an area you've ever really gone to. These are not like in your house. It's, it's a huge, like, contraption. That's the original one to the school. And on our long-range facilities plan, from the last time around, it was, it was noticed that something that needs to be replaced. So, this is like, it's a preliminary study of what, how, how do you get it done? It's not the design phase. It's the beginning of, it's a little bit more in-depth study of somebody saying, it looks old. So, it's a, you know, what do you need to do to bring it up to modern, modern levels that you need now?
Okay, well, then I, okay, then I'm confused. Because the, one of the descriptions I saw is that we're looking to see if they can split air conditioners.
That, too, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's modernizing it to, like, to bring in more electric.
But this is basically a build to create another build for us to replace stuff, probably.
I, it's one of those things that we're like this about right now that we're hoping it doesn't...
I remember from the LRFP, it's such a hole in this stuff.
If you ever look at the LRFP, you see a picture of it. Was that what I'm talking about?
Scared, scared.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so this is really talking about getting to the next generation of electrical service, not saying, like, oh, we need more air conditioners.
No, no, this is like, replace what we have, but also lock everything at the same time.
Okay, that's, that's why I was concerned. Because it seemed like it's, oh, yeah, you're adding, adding ten more air conditioners.
No, not just for that.
Okay.
So, they're hot. So, I don't, I don't support spending money on doing a feasibility study if it's, if the purpose is in any way, shape, or form to figure out air conditioning in classrooms. If the study says anything about air... If the study says anything about air conditioning again, I'm going to be upset because I'll support something that is, we need. I know there was something in the LRP that was specific to we need to upgrade electrical. I'm not sure why you have to spend seven thousand dollars in terms of what that is. Can't we just hire an electrician to give us an estimate to? I mean, if I wanted to upgrade some of my house, I'd say, hey, if I'm going to give you an estimate on fixing it, we're paying seven thousand dollars and then we're going to send it out to bid. Like, all we do is spend money on studies. It just frustrates the crap out of me.
The good thing is, it's like, it's basically like page one of documents. So in other words, if you didn't do it now, you'd be paying for it later. You know what I mean? Like, it's the first part of the study to do this. We, we didn't feel like.
We already paid for a study, we paid for the LRP. Like, that's, how many studies do we have to pay for? We paid for a study then to study the study and we.
Especially after the location.
I see, but we can tell the studies.
That's why we know when to replace it.
This is like, this is like the beginning of it though. Like, we could do, we could put it off and do it next year. But it's, like, we don't feel comfortable doing it this year. We have, we don't, we don't feel comfortable doing this job. We have other projects, we've just got too much going on, right? So this is like, if we were going to do it this year, we'd be buying this right now. It would be part of a bigger study, a bigger design study.
I guess my concern is, you're doing a study for something that you know you're going to need replaced. And why not just bring an electrical contractor and say, okay, this needs to go, give me a break.
You can't, you can't do that. You have to, you have to do it this way. In your house, you can do it that way. For us, we have to have engineers design it, put it out to bid, go through the process with the DOA. It's not like, because first of all, the guys know that it's going to be more than a forty thousand dollars. Nobody's going to tell us how much it is anyway because we can't hire them, we have to put it out to bid. So the guys don't want to come in and go, oh yeah, I can do that for seventy thousand because they know we can't hire them anyway. You see what I mean? So they, there's, it's a larger process for the kind of work we do. And, and the, so it's, it's the beginning of that and it's also to modernize our system. That's basically what it is. And, and we were torn out doing it too, when we felt like it's something that's probably going to have to be done sooner than later. I'd rather be starting the process than putting it all off. Again, this will be, they gave us the quote, they gave us the quote for the beginning of the study and then the complete study. This is like, just in one part, there's still more engineering that needs to be done because there's the design phase, the bid phase, and the, and the, what was the word, the permits you need for the state, so they have to submit it to the DOA.
So what would the price be, what would the price be, just to get a comparison, to go to permit fix, what would it all cost?
Oh, it's going to be pretty high. You have that number, right?
It was two hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ten gigas, somebody else did.
That's the, that's the total cost.
That's the total cost to get his appointment and then you're going to put it out to bid.
That's, no, the two hundred and fifty-five thousand, including the award.
Oh, I know what I was asking.
What is the study going to tell us? Is it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
No, no, that's part of it, it's part, it's part of it.
I mean, if they give us a number, it must know what work has to be done, right?
That is an estimate that we would request. If we wanted to have an idea of how much we could cost this to upgrade this electrical study, the electrical lines.
I think the most important thing is, this money's not going to go to waste. It's, if you think about it, if you think about the study, it's like three parts. This is the first part. So they're going to take that phase and then they're going to work off that. Obviously, we're looking to use the same engineers next year. It's the engineer we use whenever we do anything here, we use French Corolla.
Well, then, you know, Mike started to kind of interrupt. We'll, we'll add it this way, we can say, okay, we need to replace this particular fuse box because it's a fuse box, not a breaker board. But at the same time, all of the outlets that are fed by that fuse box, when it was put in in nineteen fifty-six or sixty-seven or whatever it was put in, they did not have any electronics in the room. You didn't have overhead projectors, you didn't have laptops, you didn't have smart boards. All you had was a couple of things for maybe an overhead, for maybe an overhead projector and a box fan. And now you've got a hu, a much larger draw, electrical draw. You have to figure out how many, you have to figure out how many phases you're going to send to each room. You have to figure out how many breakers and this isn't just take this out and replace it. Before we bought my house, we told the, we told the previous owner, we wanted the fifty amp panel replaced with the hundred amp panel. It's not that simple because you have to figure out where all of these extra breakers and the runs are going to go to. It's, it's not like just pull, plug and play, replace and, and redo it.
So I understand, but this is why French Corolla has a big, huge booth at the Jersey School Boards. Because they charge for an LRP, then they charge for a study, then they charge you to put it out to bid, then they charge you to do the contracts with the state, then they charge you to be the PM for the job. I mean, it's just, where does it end, these contractors? I'm just, I'm just done with it, to be honest with you. And I agree with you, I mean, like, if, if the goal of this is in any way, shape, or form to get air conditioning in the building, I'm not paying any more money for it unless we have a proposal to put in a specific place that can show we's going to have educational benefit for students. I just, I, where does it end? Where does it end? I mean, I guarantee we'll walk out of this and we're going to have to pay for something else for some other project. We've already got an idea of the price. I mean, I, I'm just not supporting spending the seven thousand dollars on studies. We've got roof studies, electrical studies, flooring studies, and desk studies, cafeteria study tables, studies. I mean, Jesus, I'm done with studies.
Well, we're walking, we're starting to walk down a feasibility study for a building we don't have, right? That we might not ever be in, on here as well. This is a lot.
If I can, I apologize, I mean, that's pretty long. I was the one that typed up and submitted the minutes. I happen to read air conditioner as one of the reasons for having this, so I take full credit for, or I blame for the air conditioner comment. But I do believe that it is not just for air conditioners. I do think that there, there is more to it than, than I may have actually spent the time to type out for the meeting minutes. So I'll take full credit for that, or blame for that, I should say. The second comment I'd like to make is that I'm discovering that I should, I'm in one business and I should be in the same business as French Corolla. But I guess the question for you, Steve, is, the, it, it sounds like this is part of the steps to even move forward with this LRP. Is there a way to sort of understand what that total, I mean, I know that an estimate was given to us by the parish just now. But would French Corolla be able to give us a full estimate, you know, where we can sort of plan for this and decide, is this study even necessary? Or, you know, is, or I guess the next question, is, is there a way to get around this and still move forward with it? I, you know, it sounds like we can't, but, you know, I guess, point blank, can we do without this study?
If we can do without the study, it's just going to be part of a larger study, so it'll be.
It'll be built in anyway.
This is a piece that's taken out, it's carved out, really to give us the foresight to see like, how much time we have left. They would, right now, I have something that says you have to replace, but there's stuff that says you have to replace the roof at Lakeview too. So this guy, I think they'll give us more of an in-depth report on whether or not this is something that, hey, you better have this on the burner to do right away or, you know, you can wait a little while on it. When they do that, when they do the long-range facilities plans, they don't try to leave that to the study and anything. It's really a, you know, they walk around, they do visual inspections, this is a different kind of life. A little bit, a little bit more involved in it, it'll be a study. But again, it's also like one of the phases of the, of the study, we decide not to do it now. It'll be something that we're going to want to do in the next year, you know, to get started on.
Does this study have to be done in the summer, this early or?
Well, I would rather do it in the summer, see our engineers on a fall field building, you know, the kids are there, you better.
Would the report give options, like, you could replace and upgrade possibly? So it could be like, it could bring in some different options that we could go forward with the process later?
Sure.
Steve, you said this is a portion of the study. What, after this study is complete, what is the next study that needs to be done?
So then there would be the design phase, so somebody actually has to design how to replace the stuff. Again, your proposal plan, so there's the beginning phase, and then there's the.
But there's no other studies. It obviously has to be designed and there's bidding, but this would be the only study that's necessary.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what should go on, seeing as you're only promoting to go out today, they have to study, put a bid together. Otherwise, who else is doing the math and the stand, what is that they're doing on, so you need to study and move forward.
This sounds very similar to the Valley View field, doesn't it?
We did do that.
Right, I mean, we did a, what, what is it called? A, what was that first step that they did with this?
They did a survey. When I first got here back in two thousand fourteen, the school was in bad shape. I talked, I talked to the board, we did go out and get French Corolla, French Corolla again, to do a study, a cursory study. It wasn't super expensive. They, they did, you know, what did you set on it, what would the cost be, things like that, right? Then the next stage was to decide, you know, to really hope accurate stuff, they needed to do an updated survey. You had to have that. And part of that is because they had to see what those offers are for the, the maintenance. So then, then they go from there to the next stage, which is where we're at right now, and they're designing it now.
So, okay, it sounds very similar. And to date's point, if we went ahead and not do the survey, we might be making changes that would have to be updated in a couple of years anyway because maybe they see something if the study was given, I guess, or something.
The only downside I see is if we do the study and then we put off doing the next day for five years and we don't do it. I, I don't think that's going to be the case because if you saw the things that I'm talking about, you would look at it and go, it doesn't look like it should be, and I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I don't really know. If I could see something that stands out to me, I'm like, standing out. If you see it, I was like, I, I, you know, in theory, I saw the pictures, and then somebody says, well, that's the thing you're talking about. I said, really? I couldn't believe that they had that thing still. It looked, it looked like a really, really old refrigerator, you know? Like one of those really, really old things, you know? So, but a huge one. So that's the story with that.
Steve, can I ask about the cafeteria tables at Lakeview?
Sure.
We spoke a couple of years ago about a bunch of the cafeteria tables that were replaced around the dessert. I believe it was every other school in their cafeteria and in Lakeview's APR. We originally, I remember the conversation very specifically that we talked about, the good news at Lakeview is it's going to cost a lot less money because we don't need the ones on the wall anymore because we only use it as cafeteria. I know that you had said, hey, we may use that space if we need a large space for an extra, you know, gym class or something. Would it prevent us from taking the tables, folding them up, and putting them in the corner of the room if we needed it to be used in that manner? Like, I'm assuming these are in-the-wall tables at fifty-four thousand dollars? Do, I guess my question is, do we need in-the-wall tables? For seven years, I've never seen a table folded up in that room and we haven't had an urgent need to ever do that, so.
So what have we spent once? One of the reasons, and we, we did go through that. One of the reasons why we have this particular, that's why I did have a whole discussion of them. Some of the reasons why they're not made up, because they're broken, they can't be put up. And, and they would like to have to be able to use the space and they can't use it sometimes. Another downside to having tables that, that kind of fold up and roll in society is they're not super safe for little kids. A little bit better for like high school age kids because they're not throwing stuff around and running into things and knocking them over. And we're probably never going to decide caution not to, not to have any type of safety issue. And I know, you know, not that long ago, he died if he got hit on the head with his table. We're probably, we're probably maybe over-cautious about it. But I had this exact discussion with the, the Lakeview people and our people in the central office at least three times. And then at the end, I was like, all right, you know what, if this is what you're going to do with it and it's a safety issue, I'd hate to see us do something, you know, where they want to be able to use the room for something else and they can't use it and then something gets hurt because something's, you know, not stored properly. And, and, you know, I thought about the same thing. That's, we, we were thinking originally of going like a hybrid, where you have like some of the wall and then some like foldaway. But I looked at the ones about at Marson's and they're like foldaway. And I, I just don't feel great about, like, for the little kids. I hate to see, because they're heavy, those tables are heavy. To see one of those things fall over on somebody would be, would be great.
Yeah, I completely agree that we should be looking from a safety perspective, but, I mean, let's face it, the one incident I know about was from the wall that was at a table, or a table that was at a wall, so. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure whether we appropriately store them and do it. But how much would it cost if we did the rollaways? Do we have any idea? I mean, fifty-four thousand dollars, you can do a lot of educational improvement with fifty-four thousand dollars.
One of the things about it too is, this is the last set of dish that needs to be replaced. And, and the big, the big part about it is, is those wall, pieces of the wall that come out too. So that's, that's a big part of the cost, to replace those pieces of wall for someone. So that's, that's basically it. I mean, I, I did talk to them about it a bunch of times. And it's a tough one to decide whether or not, you know, you want to listen to them on a daily basis, what they're going through, and how they want to use it. And, you know, it matters when I have conversations about it, when I have conversations. We got a better quote and then if the company was to strike the hook, so we, we, we'd qualify that quote.
I'm going to go to the next step, next person, next step.
Do we have any, I mean, how many tables is it?
Fourteen point two tables.
Do we have any idea how much rollaway tables cost per table?
Oh, is this put, this is put, turn on the thing in this, it's all for you?
I'm slow down with the password, but it's a nice idea.
I'm curious, I, I heard that Valley View and Riverview were upgraded recently, is that correct?
Yes.
Do we know how much you pay here? Do we know how much you pay for Riverview and Valley View?
So, and Lakeview still, so this is the last one. Lakeview got two rooms.
Okay.
They're all in a similar.
All part.
Depends on how many, obviously. But this is something that I'm dealing with thoroughly. It's a principle, you hang it over, how much does that cost?
Price per table, right?
It's crazy, it is. And that's, despite how you've got that business on the level. Well, at least this one is providing.
Now, to your point, it's a solid crack, certainly, it is cleaning in. If you take away the garden, maybe it's built, and what is that?
I mean, I guess, I, I hate to go spend fifty-five thousand dollars on tables that can go into the wall as opposed to just tables. And, and then we fold up the tables once a year. That's like a, you know, ten thousand dollar cost to fold up, you know?
That was your point.
And I just don't know how much, obviously, you know, listen, I understand and I respect the building administration and the team that does it, but they're always going to ask for, they're always going to want more. The question is, do we need all that and how often is it going to be used? And if the price difference is half the price, I'm not saying it, I have no idea, but it's half the price, then is it worth paying, like, actually twenty?
Maybe it's ten dollars. I, so I had this exact conversation with them. And I can go back and have them again. But they, they're assuredly that they would like to use the room without the tables in it and have the space to use it for other things. So if you want, I, I was going to have the right to be, like, you should, if you want, what exactly they do, and why they want that particular table.
I'd also like to see, and I know, I don't want us to put out a bid and get an exact price, but I'd like to see a ballpark figure, you know, these are four thousand dollars a table, what does it cost for a rollaway table?
And what did I pay per table last time?
I don't remember the number per table last time, but I can tell you I remember it. It was a long conversation, I think for the exact same reason. To sit there and say, we're going to spend fifty-some, and we did it across three different rooms. I remember a long, long discussion. I remember Steve even saying, you know, it was construction to be done when they pulled out the old, it didn't fit exactly. It wasn't exactly the same dimensions. I mean, I can remember the conversation very specifically.
At Valley, we didn't have an option to tighten space, so those tables really, I think, are an optional, because the way that space is used. What was my turn of thought? All right, and besides the tables, obviously, to be fair, with what we have, it was, these were the canal, we had to build something to hold them off. To compare out the status.
And the other question that I would like to ask for the rollaway tables is that how long do we think those rollaway tables might cost? Because if they're going to last for a couple of years, and we'll have to work to replace them, but if you roll up, if these inserted tables will last this ten years, then the price might be washed. That's sort of my perspective. We may save some money, but in the long run, we're still paying, and to have the other tables removed from the construction, so they're going to be disposed of, and to seal the walls, to be sealed off, we might be paying more for the rollaway option, especially the life of the rollaway options are not that long as well. So, if we are going to look at the rollaway tables, what do we estimate? I mean, it could last for ten years too, I'm not saying it won't. I, I just don't want us to be five years from that, saying, oh, man, we should have those inserted tables, if, if these tables break down, so. And, because, because we already know that River View ones lasted six years in county, so, I mean, do we, are we looking at a lot of repairs on River View tables, or they look in pretty shitty?
Not that we had to hire them, I think.
Okay.
So, and if they were prepared, we're able to do the house, you know, the layers should be caved in, maybe it breaks off to the bottom or something in there.
Okay.
Not that we had to call people out.
Yeah, trust me, if I had my choice, I would put custom tables in there, but I'm sure it won't work from a district or legal standpoint, so.
We also have, we also have our maintenance group doing additional layer of safety on them, each one of your sensors, like a cable, that's, that's on each, there's two on each table, just a case, and that gives us a way that the table will fold down if somebody hits it, the cables, air, it'll hold it.
Do we have the space to put the fold away tables once they're folded away, if we're going to use that room?
It would stay in the room.
It would stay in the room?
It would stay in the room, and waiting out against the wall or something.
Would it be a liability if they were doing activities?
That's what, that's what, that's what the concern was from the, from the building administration, the, the idea that if you are going to use it for certain activities, it can, that it's a liability for us overall. So, that part of it too.
Do, do they have any idea on, and I know this is really hard, because they just, but how many times a year they think they'd be using that room?
They said they'd use them all the time, that's exactly, I had that exact conversation. So if you guys, so, all the stuff you're asking, I asked. I said, if you guys are going to, if you're talking about opening these tables, put them away, you know, once a month or something, let's just figure out other options. No, if the tables actually work, we would put them away all the time, so then we could use the room for all the other things that we'd like to use it for.
Because your, your question, James, I think that's the key to that question, right? I mean, those rollaway tables, if you never fold them and roll them away, so probably last as long if not longer than the fold up into the wall tables, but if you are going to roll, hold them up every day, and roll them into the corner, and bang into the wall, and, which is natural, I'm not saying it's fault, right? If you roll one of these big things away, I'm sure it's going to bang into the wall, and it's going to bang into each other, and.
Well, that's a good point.
So if we're going to do it a lot more often, that's way more often than I thought they said they would do some, I, I would have guessed, I can count on two hands, how many times they were going to fold up those tables, but if they had a need for it, then that, I guess, changes my mind a little bit, and, you know, being more, I kind of sit here and think about it, and I know it's a complete, you know, four thousand dollars a table, so if we can get it at two thousand dollars a table, then we got to do the work on the walls, if that costs another thousand dollars per table that you go repair with, then you got to kind of clean up. Now we're at three thousand, we're saving a thousand dollars to, per table, like fourteen thousand dollars to try to fold these things up and bang into the wall and.
And, you know, the tables that we're talking about, if you don't come up, they'll extract. Like, this fifty-four thousand dollar thing, if you just left them down, they'll extract. It's, it's a going up and down process. So the same thing with the fold, any table, just taking it apart, moving it, that's what, that's what.
Well, that's why I said that, because, you know.
In third year from now, if those tables are still in good condition, they didn't come up down.
Is this the same manufacturer that we looked at, that we're buying from the other one?
This is a different manufacturer.
Different guy. Oh, it's different contract?
I'm sorry.
The manufacturer of the tables?
Exactly, it's the same manufacturer, they were one.
Okay. So the functionality of the tables is the same and all that?
More updated.
Okay.
I remember you talking to me a little, a little.
Yeah, you're going to prove it. You're charging forty dollars, forty percent more.
It really happened. I don't know if you were.
Oh, I have, yeah.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Before you mentioned, when you eliminated, a thing or a bunch, quote, when you eliminated or whatnot, how many quotes did you get at the time?
Three.
Three? Is that the best statement?
And we don't even have to get three, because this, you, you have to get three typically, but if you're using a state contract, you don't, but we still got three. Just so happened that one of the, one of the guys, we disqualified, just because, you know, we already have the problems with them, right off the bat, so, you know, we're not going to use these people.
This is under one of those coalition by, if you're talking?
It's under the, the, the.
Coalition.
It's a co-op.
Co-op, that's the name.
It is a huge room that can be utilized much more often than it is now, like the tables are kind of like, it's only used to feed the kids, or what is that, or the school did it, it's being utilized, so.
Probably more than that, I think, more than that. It's used for that, but it's also used for other stuff, yeah. They'd love that, they'd love that open space, a second open space, where I could care if the kids run around a little bit, not, maybe not a full, you know, kickball game, but something that you have some kind of activity on that day. So the answer to the question, as I said, how they would put them up there all the time, like every day? So, right now, they're not.
So, so the other piece of this is, for custodians, they're putting these tables up and down, because that's not a small job, fourteen tables. What are they not doing, right? Because that's going to take their time, right now, those tables are down. I'm just saying, from custodial perspective, and, you know, when we look at, when I look at for work, for instance, if somebody comes to us and says, I want to sell you this, I have to look and say, what's my cost to be able to maintain this, right? So I guess my question is, have we, just something to think about when we're getting things that are required more work for our staff?
It'll, it'll, it'll.
Because they've already got a full day.
Right, it'll take more work to do that, but at the same time, clean the floor.
That's right.
Maybe, maybe a wash. I see you doing it, I go, wow, you're pretty good, usually two guys doing it, in five minutes maybe, again, tables up, six minutes, something like that.
Any other questions?
Steve, can you just talk a little bit about, uh, five, six, and seven, like, damage? Floor, you're talking about it for?
So, it's not damage from like any kind of flood or anything, it's just original carpet that needs to be replaced.
Okay, yeah, just what you read, or when I read to the public, and you say damage, it sounds like something happened to it.
Yeah.
So just for clarification.
It's, it's damage or it's worn?
It's worn, okay, thank you.
And, and seven, if you guys remember, this is actually the last piece of the planet three. We didn't do it, while we did everything, but we wanted, but because it's kind of like that idea of, let's see what happens whenever they have the, the vest wheel and all that, what they actually need. So this is the last piece, it was, that was part of that one million dollar project we did a year before, we just held off, just wanted to make sure we do it where they want to do it there.
On nine, security volunteers, do you have a new volunteer, or is it replacing?
So we don't have them now. At, at, at Lakeview, when you pull into Lakeview, and we have a kindergarten park a lot, and it was part of the security and safety audits we have, was to put bars there, not even for active terrorism, but also for, you know, somebody mistakenly put the gas instead of the, instead of the brake, going up over the curb and crashing into the kindergarten playground with kids on it. So, it's to protect vehicles from going up into that playground.
Actually, I will say, I never thought about it until it was obviously brought up, but now I've looked at it, pretty much every time I go in that park a lot, I was just there for a little day last week, and I walk right by there, the buses literally pull head on, facing into that playground, so I, I completely think it's something that, you know, they're not a, this is not like a sophisticated piece of equipment here, it's, you know, so I think it's.
Concrete and iron.
Yeah.
And we're going to buy, which is not included, there'll be a little bit more of a cost, we're going to put one of those sleeves over, so it's not like super hard.
Yeah, like, it's like a, like a check, they have those plastic.
That, like that, right? Just in case a kid runs into it, it's not going to.
Right, okay.
We're at the 7-Eleven, you know that, right?
I know, I can remember.
Do you know, it was one of the things that the security, I guess it was security committee when we met, that we really wanted as a priority to get the college.
Well, somebody just ran a card to me with Christian on the ten last night, so, I'm sure they would, they would have acknowledged and helped.
So, when I was a kid, my little, seventy years old, my dad was working at, he was the vice president of the bank, sitting at these dentures like this, a car kept crashing it right here, and the lady never took her foot off the pedal, so when it hit the, when it went through the old building, it crashed into the wall where it finally stopped, the, he said the wheel of the car was still going, I believe, he just.
It's Denver.
Right. So, those are all the kinds of things that, plus, you know, my, I didn't think of it either, we did pay, before I got here, and then when I got here, we had another audit, and those were put on both of the audits. So, again, we don't do all of our security things the first time it's on there, it's kind of, it's on the list, it gets moved, and now it's up for funding.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Please take a moment.
Just one second.
Are we not voting on eleven then?
Yeah, with the, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to amend the?
Um, well, we, can we go back to discussion? Okay, right? All right, so, I can just say, from my perspective, after the discussion, I'm good with it, but if I, if I pull off, you certainly can, I know I was the one that had a lot of things to say on it, but after the discussion, I guess I'm good with it, but others feel differently, feel free to vote.
I, I would support calling it, I already said that.
I did move to this, I did move to this meeting, because it is kind of sensitive in itself, so. I'm not, I'm not saying it won't be ready by the beginning of school, but it was one of the ones that was sensitive.
Laura, I would say you move, so it's completely your decision whether, otherwise, everybody can vote against it, or feel, and we can always put it back on if it is not voted for.
Okay. So, with that in mind, I'm going to leave it as what you presented.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Capello?
Okay, I'm staying on four, no on eleven, yes on anything else.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
I'm staying on number four, and yes on anything else.
Mr. Hines?
No on B four, yes on everything else.
Thank you.
Mr. Luer, can you please move us through your business, no actually take attention?
I would be happy to. At the next meeting, we will be voting on five way items. Item one is a list of various personnel things, we have, we cross the guy, we for a couple of teachers, we re-replace some teachers, we have instructional aid for the ADA program, future ready related costs for various, for a couple of people, additional school hours for the eighteen, nineteen school year, several people for state mandated ECR IP meetings, summer hours for the nurses, directing, retroactive directing, fifth grade playing on six, six, and summer curriculum work for half a dozen teachers, and a couple of teachers for the complete community-based instructional curriculum for writing summer twenty nineteen. We also have approval for a leave of absence for the FMLA.
Questions? Steve, the only comment I would have is on one K, I noticed that's a retroactive. I would say, obviously, I prefer if they're not retroactive, I know it happens sometimes, but on retroactive stuff, in favor of the employee who's already done work, like in this case, in the future, I'm okay with putting it on the agenda. I know we normally would move things during recessions, but I think if an employee did something, I feel, that's just my opinion, I don't think anybody else has an opinion on that, but.
I'd support that.
Are you suggesting that we vote on it immediately? No, I mean, this one, I don't think we have a need to change that unless you think it is, but I think in the future.
I would be perfectly happy to move to reopen Personnel A, Personnel number one to add what is currently Personnel K, putting in is Personnel M for this week.
Is that a real change? If you're going to make a difference, because every time, all the time, you can submit it on the end of the school year, and there would be a, there would be a difference.
I, yeah, I don't think so, but, I mean, sometimes it may be a cutoff on the pay, but it's probably not because of the way our work sessions fall, but it's more just, if an employee did it, I want to get that approval done as quick as possible in favor of.
If you're interested in doing it, we can make the motion easier.
I'm, I'm okay with waiting if it's not going to affect when he's paid, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. But in the future, I just, just, maybe from a personal perspective, if they did work, let's get it approved. It's a little thing, but. Anybody else have anything else for Personnel?
Just a question for Dr. Collins, so, reflect, reflect at Francis Fordham, is that, um, what we have the, this teacher on?
It is, so the crew, there was actually a team, the team that's there, they're going to spend the year planning it, we're just meeting for four hours over the summer to revise and see, based on the date, the feedback from the participants, if we need to revise anything.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, do you want to move through structural arrangements? Can you take it?
Sure. At the next meeting, we will be considering our IMP, items one through three, one will be a list of future requests, two are workshop expenses, right now for, for recruits, teachers from Lakeview, actually, teachers from River View, and also, we will be approving the survey for the Edelfire Department for elementary students.
Hey, can you hear a little more about the survey for the Edelfire Department?
So, it's in your, it's in your folders, it's in your shared folders, it's just a short survey that they want to know about if kids know how to call nine-one-one, it's for little kids.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
That's right. And our policy. I missed that that was a survey, I thought it was like a promotional campaign.
I read our policy just to make sure I was accurate, but we, our policy does require board approval for any, any surveys. They're going to do it in September. I could, I could have done it in August, I'd rather just get it over now.
Any other questions? Okay. We have no policies for the community, so move on to finance, district, and, and.
If you're gonna make a difference, because all the time, all the time, you can just submit it on the end of the school year and there would be like a very different.
Yeah, I don't think it's about, I mean, sometimes it may be a cutoff on the pay, but it's probably not because of the way our work sessions fall. But it's more just if an employee did it, I want to get that approval done as quick as possible in favor of.
If you're interested in doing it, we can make the motion easier.
I'm, I'm okay with waiting if it's not gonna affect when he's paid, but. Okay, but in the future, I just, just made from a personal perspective, they did work, let's get it approved. It's a little thing, but. Anybody else have anything else for Personnel?
Just a question for Dr. Collins, so your friend, your friend Francis Burdwell, is that, um, what we have the, this teacher on?
It is, so the group, there was actually a team, the team that's there. They're going to spend the year planning it, but we're just re-meeting for four hours over the summer to revise and see, based on the date, the feedback from the participants, if we need to revise anything.
Anything else? All right, do you want to move through structural renovation, should we take it?
Sure, at the next meeting, we will be considering our IMP, items one through three. One will be a list of future requests, two are workshop expenses, uh, right now for, um, for recruitees, teachers from Lakeview, action, teachers from Lipperton, and also we will be approving the survey for the Edelfire Department for elementary students.
Hey, can you hear a little bit more about the survey for the Edelfire Department?
So it's in your, it's in your folders, it's in your shared folders? It's just a short survey that you wanna know about if kids know how to call nine one one, it's a little kids.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
That's right.
And our policy.
I missed that that was a survey, I thought it was like a promotional campaign.
I read our policy just to make sure I was accurate, but we, our policy does require board approval for any, um, any surveys. They're gonna do it in September.
I could, I could have done it in August, I'd rather just get it over now.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, we have no policies for the community, so move on to Finance, District Craft, New Year's period, next meeting?
At the next meeting, uh, we ask the board to approve, uh, item number one, the check register, remote fund card expenses general organization at Elementary in Richmond. And, uh, number two is to authorize transfer to the Capital Reserve up to two million dollars in support for all research evaluations. Uh, number three is another transfer just to make its reserve of five hundred thousand dollars.
MetLife seat.
Or?
MetLife seat.
Not U C. Five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, number four is to authorize the business administrator, board secretary, proceed with all necessary activities for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Uh, cancellation of purchase orders, stale data checks, transfers, supplies, a couple of contract for, and award of bids, and those such actions are typically required based on statute code and policy. And any act of things will be confirmed by the board at our next regular public meeting. Number five is to approve the uncommon threads for River View, B C B A, the heavy services for the upcoming school year. Total fees not to exceed one hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. Uh, number six is to approve PG sent chambers to be done occupational physical therapy sessions, evaluation to training, including orphaned tenant services for the nineteen, twenty school year, and the including E S Y program. A total fee is not to exceed eighty-eight thousand eight hundred ten dollars. Last one, number seven, is to approve prime healthcare services, St. Clair's LLC to provide healthcare services if needed, commencing eight one nineteen at a cost of two hundred twenty-two dollars per evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Any questions? When do we, or do you know the exact amount that will be transferred over to Capital Reserve or to Main Reserve, or Main Reserve?
Now, um, by, by regulation, every term, we'll be close out again, we need to board proof an amount of MetLife seats, we request to be able to transfer anyone who's spent one to create a physical therapy service. If we do not do this, which we don't, we will be able to transfer any ones.
I see, um, do you announce how much you, that you actually transfer?
After the audit.
After the audit?
Yes.
October, okay. So it could be anywhere from a dollar to two million dollars. Well, it's about two million dollars.
Two million dollars, much higher than I remember us doing in previous years. Is that, are we doing that in an effort to prevent the, uh, the excess overage or whatever it was from two or three years ago?
We, we always had that in this resolution, uh, two years ago, we added the amount to two million dollars. Even the previous year, from the portion that proved it, we had a nice excess amount left over. And we couldn't have the whole to have this, so therefore we have the amount to prove the order to the foundation. That we don't have to, we don't have to produce anything to be excess like us, where we can do something, and we can come up with that same amount for the future.
Thank you. Just to clarify, I was kidding, it's not between one and two million, it's actually between zero and two million. Yeah, creepy zero. It won't be better on the other.
Well, one thing to find about the marriage, she didn't seem to call you on that number.
Yes, yes, we try, we'll try every meeting from now until October. That has to work it.
You won't get her, yeah.
See, why don't you give me a ballpark, right?
Steve, can you, um, just talk about that perception, what?
That's for when, when kids are experiencing some type of a trauma, like, or, or they've done something that lets them believe that they're armed themselves or others. And they get sent to St. Clair's to be exemplified by somebody to see if they're clear to go right to school or not.
Okay. So to the, I mean, I guess you're just parsing words, but is it just a mental health evaluation or is it also a physical evaluation?
So it's, it's a mental health evaluation by, by, by an N D, so it could, I guess it could have something to do with their physical condition too, as well as their mental condition. But it's a, it's a psychiatrist, not just a counselor.
Okay.
Any other questions for Finance?
As a matter of fact, in, in general, when you get rid of stale checks, I mean, what's the process for that? And like, checks are, what period of time do you go by?
Normally six months.
Okay.
I mean, I think over six months or quite a lot.
Do we have, have you got any other devices to be able to?
Uh, when I first started, we had a lot, but since then, we've been trying to write them off and, um, eco.
We also have the same purchase orders, except for example, coffee, like, pro-processed.
Yes, we did, um, right now, we have probably two years old purchase order, but we like, some of those we had to be open because of certain reasons. Could be legal reasons, could be, um, speed, speed reasons, but most, most likely don't have any old purchase order or old checks.
Any else? This is, I can wait, I'm gonna start operating.
Sure, so at the next meeting, um, we will be voting on the school west emergency evacuation drills for all three schools. We will also be going to approve the Capital Shared Services Agreement with the Town of Edenville for renovations of the Valley View Athletic Field. And we will be approving the catchment and rescue kind of bid.
Any questions?
Have we received any other bids besides them?
Yes, we did, we see good totals.
Obviously, catchment was the, was the lowest, we were, uh, we, we're, they're the ones that we're using this year, right?
Correct.
It was eight percent.
So, so we don't have to worry about them saying, yeah, we'll do it, and then we're just closing down the business and going away, right?
Correct.
We know where he lives. We'll just turn the light off.
Do we get anything on the evacuation report other than like what they're supposed to do? In other words, I never see anything like an after action.
You get the lot of route numbers.
Yeah, I know, it's great. Now, I mean, if we get anything like, you know, it's go right, and we did this, and the kids, I mean, how many kids do you have of them? And it just seems like we're proving something we have no clue about.
So it's basically the kids go to the parking lot and they, and they get off the back of the bus. And they're just playing to what to do. So basically to evacuate the bus, it's not, it's not really any other purpose. They get off the emergency exit, they're asked not to wear skirts, so the kids don't have to jump down.
And who signs off on that?
The officer.
He signs off on something that the, like, the city's on.
He goes, he goes.
No, I don't mean that, I mean, like, in other words, there's some documents somewhere, like, what are we approving, I guess is my question.
This is basically the resolution that we have to approve, I mean, so there's some kind of document. I've asked and it's stayed apart.
You want to document up this evacuation drill, like, do you want to report?
I was only gonna say, this evacuation drill is done, and this is what happened.
Next time, let the owner of it is, he can come.
I have my pictures, I don't get, I mean, I'm, I'm being a half kidding, I'm serious. But it just seems like we're proving something that there is no documentation.
Because have you driven the bus with him?
Yeah.
What about, uh, what about your daughter?
No, I wasn't.
Well, you can ask her, what was the line on, ask what he did on five twenty-nine. And eight ten a.m.
So I'll approve that, I'll approve Henry's report, like, if I agree that in, okay?
No, whatever, I don't.
No, 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 I mean, just see.
Probably some of your witnesses, you really want to see this.
It's not, it's not.
I witnessed it, I saw what it looks like. It's just kids jumping off the back.
But we, like, I approve, we approve that, it's too sweet, it's like, the marriage is, these are the checks, these are what we're paying, right? We approve all kinds of things, to me, there was just something.
Did she have any of her vaccinations?
No, but the nurse is certified, the nurse is signing off somewhere on her report, right? Saying that this is done, like, to me, there was no bus evacuation.
I don't know, I could ask Tom to run it and know about it.
It's around ten minutes, and they take off, just see how many students go in the bus and.
Like, we track everything else, right, but we don't track, this seems weird.
We track, can you approve it?
Yeah.
I'm trying to say it actually happened.
All right, I'm done, I'm done already, you're right.
You can be on the board for, you know, you can be on the board for what, for what I have, you're telling you approve one of these.
I know, I know, like, you know, this is tonight, we're deciding.
Steve, this is the conversation every time you approve it, because I've actually asked every year, can we please take this off the agenda, because.
And even, even the, you said.
It's the one reason that we have to do this evacuation.
Dave, we, we used to approve, I mean, I'm not sure if you remember what we did, we had to approve it every bus route, every school year.
Right, I was on the.
I significantly went back on that and said, I have no idea what I'm approving, like, I don't know if this is, this is even, in fact, I found some that were wrong. And I was like, all right, I can't, so we stopped proving those, because we didn't have to, but this one we had to.
Yeah, he just says, I don't know, you got to give it then.
I find it interesting. All right, so you said, you got, you got.
They, they timed the evacuation, you have, uh, regulatory share.
Tell us your time.
No, how long, he's asking right now, um.
It's a regulation, how long.
Do you know, is there? You know, it might be, I mean, maybe it's.
You guys couldn't go with like a couple of good easy meetings, right?
Any other questions? You good, Dale?
Sure.
We wouldn't have today.
All right, we are gonna move on to the good cause. I'll, I'll bury it together, any comments, questions?
Only one quick thing, um, the enrollment space goes along with that. We did two weeks ago, I told you what we're going to do, but two weeks ago, Bonnie sent a letter to all realtors, and a realtor that has, I had to do it, that obviously, not if they're, you know, an hour away, but local realtors got the policies that they know, if a person comes in, this is the area that you go to. River View is the area, or Lakeview is the area where it's uncertain. They go, I, I don't know whether or not they share, we do have a comment that is based on our website.
I think it's sort of clear that, you know, the idea of the flex out is that they always still assign to Lakeview unless there's an overflow situation, there's too many at Lakeview, we need overflow room. That's silly, talking about.
It's not.
That's how we really clear next year.
Right, the one thing that we, it, it's not them to request, it's us to say, sorry, this, this group here, to, to, to be more efficient throughout the district, these people are going to River View rather than River View. It's not really a request situation, it's like our determination.
I have something to share, uh, on May twenty-third, in March, I attended the Mars County School Board Association Dinner. And this was the board member awards milestones meeting, and, um, she made me, and I'm on behalf. On behalf.
It's a marriage sex you've been doing.
I am, she made me, I was present. Um, yes, Laura Meyer has completed her new board member training, that means, uh, she's, uh, you took the first three years of her term, she has completed the in-person, right, it has to be in-person, get basically, um, training. And so, and I'd like to award her with this lovely certificate. Thank you so much.
Thank you for accepting that.
I would say from the photo, I was like, no, not Laura.
I think she needs to photo her, put her.
And that's what we're watching.
Yes.
No. No. This is your new one, if you want the, uh, the.
Okay.
We can take a picture of the certificate if you're.
Um, I have a couple of quick things, um, if you plan on attending the Valley View graduation and have not told Steve, please let him know, so we can make sure we, uh, have enough seats for the folks that are gonna attend here, obviously all welcome to attend.
I plan on attending, Steve.
Okay.
So, so far, I have Eno, who's gonna be, that's a dad edit, or a person.
Yeah.
Eno's gonna pass out the certs. And your family is covered by whatever you, right, so you know.
Okay.
Mike is going to be there, he's gonna need help with seats.
Fine.
And you're gonna pass out the certs, is that right?
After I sign.
That's right, please, it's Tuesday, I will not be there, because my own daughter is also graduating.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Dave, what, what kind of year for you?
Uh, Chris is gonna pick me.
You, uh, you can work with the other district and tell them you had a, tell the graduation. When, when district?
They did say they knew that one.
Next Tuesday.
Uh, eighteen.
At, um, Marshall's.
Marshall's. And what time?
Six, three, I think. Then I'll tell Mike, tell all this stuff, you know, I have.
Where do we show us?
Seven?
It's Tuesday.
I, I would like to go then. How many seats would you need?
I would just be. I have seven P M.
I have, I have seventy-eight that I have. Seventy-eight degrees.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm gonna think about it.
That's a liar.
Not as soon. And have you been on one of the stages?
Yeah.
Yes.
Steve, you did it last year, right? It's not the marriage.
Okay, um, I mentioned Valley View, the eighth grade trip, uh, I was at Lakeview last Friday for Olympic Day, on the same day as River View's Field Day, awesome day for weather, great day for the kids. Appreciate the staff, I know the, uh, the, uh, phys ed teachers were there early, early at like sunrise to get everything set up. Lot of great families here, both parents, P T A members, it was, uh, it was awesome, so appreciate everybody for doing that. Um, I also attended, and I think this was since the last meeting, the Valley View parent orientation meeting for secondary coming in. Um, I'm sure Mr. Corbin did a phenomenal job going through everything, answering any questions. Everybody walked out of there, really excited for their kids to go up to Valley View and, um, he did a really nice job. And then the staff, uh, was there, so it was, it was really well done. Um, I did want to mention that, I know we had, um, a snafu with the buses on the sixth grade Valley View trip recently. I want to say thank you to all the staff who quickly made sure, number one, that all the students were gonna be safe. And number two, made sure they got to the trip and had a great time. And the feedback at the end was that the kids had a really, really good time, um, despite some snafus that were out of our control and appreciate, but I really appreciate you guys acting very quickly, addressing it, and, uh, and they truly gave it up to go safely, so. Um, and then the final thing I have is, at our next meeting, I will be charging a new committee for the, for the, uh, board. Um, we're gonna kind of finalize in the name, but Dale gave me an idea when I brought it by him, something along the lines of school climate and wellbeing committee. Um, and I'd like to discuss a few things on that committee. It'll probably be three board members, some staff members, some community members, probably parents, as well as administrators, to really talk about, um, you know, everything from our hiring practices, our, um, our overview of staff and students, um, our wellbeing of students, so if there's ever crises or there's a need for anything, just to go with some ideas and have some discussion on, uh, based upon the last few, uh, two month or so in the district, just to kind of get some, uh, ideas coming at that, um, to help ensure that we continue to move the district in the right direction. I think it's important that whenever we have situations, I know the administration is looking, uh, retroactively as to what could we have done? What did we do? What could we do better in the future? Um, but I also think the board should be looking at that and getting community, um, input on that. So I will be charging that committee, um, I'm asking tonight if you have any questions, any comments about it, any ideas, please reach out to me. Uh, so that will be at our next meeting.
What's the name, buddy?
I think it's gonna be school climate and wellbeing.
You want to get back to me?
Yeah, I will.
Cause we'll, we'll put a resolution together.
Yes, you're here with, yeah. But if you have ideas on it, or name, ideas, anything, please let me know.
I was fortunate enough. I was fortunate enough to, uh, attend, uh, River View Field Day, uh, which I think, again, was run wonderfully well. There's a couple of people who have been doing it for several years now, aside from the staff and the teachers, who, uh, did a very, very good job of making sure everything ran well. And, uh, I was also fortunate enough to attend, uh, the sixth grade incoming parents night. And I have to second, uh, Mr. Anderson's comments about, uh, how smoothly it went and G. Horton's performance and how everybody pretty much left with all of their questions answered.
I, I was present during the River View third grade recorder concert, which my daughter was a part of. And I had to commit a music teacher, because I, uh, I mean, this is me right now from the, uh, from River View, but, uh,
but, uh, Mrs. Graves, thank you, you're welcome, um, and I thought she did a fabulous job, and the kids had a great time, so, um, and I very appreciate it.
We're really well seen, that's, uh, fourth grade, uh, New Jersey Day, we went very well, again, kudos to Mrs. Graves, and it's amazing, the kids, uh, sang three long complicated songs as part of their, in addition to planning their presentation, um, they went on a great musical, like, seven musical members, the whole day was very cool, and I, I like New Jersey, I think it's one of the, uh, one of the highlights of, uh, of fourth grade, and you do a great job.
I forgot to mention that the fifth grade talent show is, uh, Tuesday tomorrow night, I believe. At, at Berrit.
Yeah, there's, I'll tell you, like, I know it's a really busy time of the year for everybody, and the amount of performances and everything that the staff are doing, we truly appreciate all the work they're putting in, and give it a chance for the parents to come out and see, between, Laura reminded me, Festival of the Arts, I think that was a little while ago, Lakeview, um, I was at, um, Mars County Courthouse when they had the Memorial Day ceremony, our Lakeview fourth graders, uh, select choir is invited, and they're the only school that attends, it's a really, um, it's a veteran ceremony where they present medals to a handful of veterans in their community throughout all the year, and, uh, our students are so well behaved, they do such a phenomenal job, they, after they sang, they walked down the line and thanked every single veteran who shook their hand. So I was really, really impressed with the students, the, Mr. Kay does a phenomenal job with them, and, uh, I appreciate it. So I know there's a lot of work that goes in at the end of the year here, and, um, appreciate the staff for all the work they're doing. Anything else we can do to the public? All right, it is, uh, nine oh five, and it will open up for our second open public comment section tonight. Anything, your name of the district, if anybody has any comments, the public can come up, they can sign their name and address for the record, or state their name and address, and sign on this sheet of paper. See, no one comes to the table, close our public comment section at nine oh five also, and nobody for a second, but it's great. Go quick here. Second, go quick. Thank you, Mr. Luer, thank you, Mr. Kim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names?
No.
Any objections?
No.
We're closed at nine oh five.